We could call the special meeting Tuesday, May 14th, 2024 to order. Standing by.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes. Mr. Horga.
Here.
Mrs. Sensi.
Here.
And Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
On me.
So here. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horga.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
We're switching things up tonight, and we're going to have recommendations of the superintendent first.
I have two items on the agenda this evening. The first is to accept the resignation, the retirement, with regret, the retirement resignation of Doug Baker, North Elementary School principal, effective the end of the current contract year. And then to enter into an employment contract with Teresa Solar under a two-year administrator's contract as North Elementary School principal, effective August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2026.
I'll move.
A second?
Any discussion?
It's a bittersweet day for me. As I shared with you previously, I've known Doug Baker for 30 years. Our paths crossed at Memorial Junior High. And we did our master's program through Ashland together. And, you know, a few years ago, when, after he left, to go to Montana and come back, he said, "Any chance I can, there's jobs in Madison?" And I said, "I will take you." You know, Doug is one of those people that is just, you can go in any circle, and they've got wonderful things to say about Doug Baker. And he's got a generous heart, the kids love him, the staff loved him. And he's going to be missed. Do you have any words, Doug?
No. Yeah. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to serve the students and community over the last four years. I've worked with great, great people, and I'm thankful for that. And Teresa's gonna do an awesome job, so. You're in good hands, not just good hands, great hands. But, you know, I didn't really want to retire this way, but, you know, I'm, again, thankful for the four years I had here. And, you know, I know good things are gonna continue to happen in this school district. And, you know, there's a lot of support people that will support Teresa in her new role. We're just a phone call away or a text message away.
Every day.
Very grateful, so thank you.
And Karen, I have to say, Doug at our, at the, at our retreat at the end of his first year, we were all in here, we were all talking, and he declared he was dating again. And he has never been happier than he has been.
Yeah, he was glowing.
Well, we have two grandsons now, who must hop in this and we absolutely adore, spend a lot of time with. They're, they're four minutes away if Karen's driving, five or six if I drive.
Thank you, Doug. And so, the sweet part is naming Teresa Solar as principal of North Elementary. And I asked some special people to be here tonight. Sally and of course Doug to cheer you on and to support you. And do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I, I have to say that I am so supported by all these people here and others, everyone. So it's a journey I didn't know that I would do, but it's something I was always interested in. And then it's just, it's just kind of fallen into place and happened. And I'm thankful for everyone who's helped me along the way and will continue to help me. And I love that school, and I love this district, and so we're gonna continue to do great things.
I remember when Sally Jo and I interviewed you for your teaching position. So, all those years ago. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Bob, do you have anything to say since you've just been with us this whole second semester?
Since Thanksgiving. No, the first part is just thank you to the board and Angela for giving me the opportunity. I was superintendent for almost 25 years, and it is good to be able to get back to where it really happens. And I've enjoyed it immensely. And, you know, working with Teresa and working with the wonderful North staff. They're outstanding and great teams. So I've enjoyed myself, and I've watched Teresa just grow into this position. She's, she's gonna do well. Very proud.
Roll call.
Mr. Horga.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Now, I know everybody loves a good five-year forecast, but I'm sure you've had tonight.
I'm offended.
Stay for the forecast.
Thank you.
Bob's having a nice birthday yesterday.
Bob was the first one out.
Good time here. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Check your mail soon, I got something for you.
Yeah, I get to state them. I love a good five-year forecast. What good is that? I just wanted to tell you, this young lady was handpicked and traded everything that she possibly just traded. So I'm not surprised, she's been wonderful. Thank you so much. And Sally loves a good five-year forecast, so I guess she's staying. Some five-year forecast due to. I have neighbors who call me and ask me questions, "Find out, find out." But here I am, giving all the information.
Do you think we need to close that door?
I guess.
Sen just take her pictures for us, so she will be.
All right, so Sarah's gonna present the five-year forecast. We could let her get through the presentation, and if we can hold any questions till the end. Some of them getting answered, they should go along, I believe, so.
Okay, so this is the May 2024 five-year forecast presentation, an update from the November one that I did. Next slide, our clicker's not working, so Dave's helping me out.
I prefer you say Pete.
Yes. Um, I always like to start it off with.
So we move the camera so it's facing.
No, I think, I think we usually send, uh, send Jo the, the presentation and he'll upload it. So, yeah, upload those pictures.
So I always like to start out with some of the things that might be affecting the forecast right now. So the board of the Federal Reserve System has set the current interest rate at 5.5%. As unchanged from the November forecast, we know coming up in 2025 that the Lake County Auditor's Office will be conducting their property tax reapap, reappraisals as part of their triennial update. The emergency levy renewal did pass on the March 19th, 2024 ballot, and that levy generates around 1.52 mils. We have negotiations upcoming for both our NEA and OPEC unions, and those are set to start at the end of May. This forecast, as we have done in years past, does not include base wage increases. It only includes the step increases. There are also built into this forecast certain increases that we know are going to take place. The Lake Computer, Computer, or Lake Giaga Computer Association is now merged with Neonet, and so we are going to have an increase in the contractual price due to that. We know that we are going to have to renegotiate our transportation and technology contracts that are upcoming. And as stated in my November five-year forecast presentation, the district does anticipate that somewhere down the line we will be having some major upcoming repairs that need to take place due to the age of some of our facilities and this general wear and tear. So we still need the roofing repairs to take place at the high school, and that'll be around $145,000, and that's in, around the wood shop and weight room area. We have some parking lot repairs that still need to take place at North, as well as the high school. And then just the roof located at North Elementary is about 26 years old. Also, heating and air conditioning units will, you know, continue to need to be repaired. In terms of the health insurance, health insurance increase, increases are built into this forecast. The health, the health consortium, or a part of the Lake Schools Consortium, did indicate that health causes, health costs will be on the rise. So percentages are built in there for the next upcoming year, as well as fiscal years 26 through 28. The ESR funds will be expiring at the end of this year, as we all know. And so any of those expenditures that we're currently using through those grants will be returned to the general fund at the conclusion of the grant. Some additional funding that we received from the state was, we received some funding for menstrual product reimbursement, which allowed us, which was around $12,000, which enabled us to put in some new feminine hygiene dispensers in the middle of the high school, as long, as well as the products. Another big area that we received funding from the state was in our April number two state payment, and it was for the high-quality instructional materials, and that was around $45,000. That was a nice additional revenue that we got. Next slide. ODE, we have, you know, some treasurer's meetings, and Aaron Roush from the state included this as part of his presentation. And I thought it was kind of a powerful slide to look at in terms of changes in the assessed property valuation for the school districts. This slide in particular is for tax years 2018 through 2022. And you can see, you know, Lake County over there in the upper right-hand corner. And then on the legend in the bottom, you can see for 2018 to 2022, we were in about the, the second quintile, which was the 0 to 14.9% range. Next slide. And then if we move into tax year '22 to '23, and this is a projection, we're more trending towards, you know, the darker green colors, the fourth quintile to the top quintile. So the '23 and then maybe the '31-plus changes in assessed property valuation. Next slide. How this has changed, and this is a statewide slide for the assessed property valuations, I think this is also kind of a powerful slide just to see how from the, the bottom two columns, for tax year '23 projected in December of '22, they were anticipating a 4.24% change. But then by tax year '23 projected in January of 2024, it jumped up to a 15.87% change. So you can see that that's changing statewide. Next slide. And so I included a couple of slides. I know sometimes there's questions on how the taxes are calculated. This is part of the funding formula. And so this is just a brief depiction of, you know, the home value, and then multiplying it by the assessed value times the mils will get you kind of your gross property tax rate. And some of the things that can be included in those are funding for schools, fire departments, police departments, parks, libraries. And then if you subtract out the state paid reimbursements, like your homestead, individuals that qualify for that, that'll get you at your current tax bill. And then property values versus tax rate. So I think that there is some confusion on, you know, anytime levy is renewed or what we're collecting at. You know, why aren't we seeing the increase just because the, you know, the triennial update happened and we're seeing this increase in home values? Well, I mean, the way it works in Ohio is when a district reaches the 20-mil floor, the millage will not decrease any further, which causes the school district to see additional funding for all increases in valuation that occur after reaching the 20-mil floor. This results in increases in property taxes to residents. So in this next slide, which I put up, I know you mind. This is just a brief description of the difference between inside millage, outside millage, and based some levies. And then underneath, we're currently at 4.85 inside mils and 55.11 outside mils. And you can see that the inside millage is not voted, whereas the outside millage is something you would vote for for school levy or a library, park levy, that sort of thing. Next slide. And now how this equates to Madison. And this goes back from 2013 all the way into 2027. And you can kind of see the bar chart. And in particular, look at the dotted yellow line. That's indicative of the 20-mil floor that gets referenced. So you can see, like in tax year 2017, about the time the finance district levy went on, you can see the blue line spiked. Now, if you go over to fiscal year 2024, we hit the 20-mil floor. So that's good news for us. Next slide. This is the district total revenue and local real estate revenue. The orange is the total operating revenue for the district, and the blue is the total real estate revenue. And so with the property reapap, reappraisals that happened, pending no legislative change, I will make that disclaimer, we are anticipated to receive an additional $650,000 in tax year 2025 and 2026, because with real estate, you receive it in halves. And then an anticipated $500,000 in tax year 2027 and also 2028. So you can see how hitting that 20-mil floor will potentially let us see those gains of the reappraisals.
Can I add one thing in there? Because I've been to a lot of legislative updates, and there have been many bills talking about this 20-mil floor and the property reevaluation and to give taxpayers relief. So that's why when we were discussing this, Sarah and I felt that statement was very important.
Pending no legislative changes, disclaimer.
And no one has a crystal ball of what's going on in Columbus.
Right. Next slide, please. Or we can just go on. No, he's filming, it's not on.
Okay, got it.
And this is just a boring thing to look at, but this is the current Schedule A, as they call it, from the Lake County Auditor's Office. I just thought it would be informative and kind of show you where we're at with all of our individual levies that we collect, and then our inside mils and our outside mils. So if you get bored at night, you feel like looking at this. Now I wanted to segue into the change in ADM, the school district enrollment. And this is from fiscal year 2018 to 2023. I also really liked this slide that Aaron had in the treasurer's update, because as you can see, that this one also has a legend down there at the bottom, and it shows you the different increments where the different counties experienced various levels of decrease in enrollment, but it is statewide. And if you look at the center towards like, like maybe where Franklin County would be, I mean, they experienced some very significant changes in enrollment. And under the new funding formula, the, these last two topics that I've discussed, the property taxes as well as enrollment, those are heavily weighted into the Fair School Funding Plan. And obviously, with, again, with Lake County being up in, you know, the upper right-hand corner, we kind of are in that middle section. So luckily, we weren't as heavily hit as some of our other counties here in Ohio. Next slide, please. And so this I include in every forecast, it's a depiction of the historical and projected enrollment for Madison schools. It goes back from fiscal year 2019 to projected 2028. Fiscal year 19 enrollment was at 2,826 and has dropped to 2,492 for this year. In the subsequent years of 2025 to 2028, it is projected to drop to 2,335. And this is just based on, off of the live birth rates and historical trends. Enrollment is directly correlated to funding from the state with a drop in 41 students from November to May. And Angela and I did a little bit of a deeper dive into this to, to kind of see from a more granular standpoint where we were losing those students. And interestingly enough, a significant portion of it was from our all-day kindergarten program, those students transitioning into first grade. Unfortunately, something that happened was we would have parents enroll their children here for all-day kindergarten, but then when they went to go make that transition into fourth grade, they would enroll in schools that didn't offer all-day kindergarten, like at Geneva, and then enroll their students there. We also had some, we also noticed some decline in enrollment in the high school level. And so, you know, we're tracking that, and Angela's been very diligent about, you know, she even referenced last board meeting, I believe, where the numbers were for North and South coming in with their kindergarten rates. So that's something we're diligently looking at. Next slide, please. This is the current fiscal year projected financial analysis. So we started the year, the fiscal year July 1st with about 3.5 million. We're projecting to end around 3.3 million with the projected revenue about 28.5 million. Projected expenditures, 28.7 million. So a projected loss for the year of about $198,000. I was pretty happy it came within 98% of what we forecasted in November. This is the current fiscal year revenue analysis, and this breaks down the projected local taxes, the projected state funding, and all other revenue. As you can see, we do, our biggest revenue source does come from the state, with local taxes coming in second, and then a small portion being all other revenue. Property cap, property values did go up, which ties into the local taxpayer effort. So by losing enrollment, it adds a greater burden to the local taxpayer effort, funding per pupil. Having declining enrollment combined with rising property values means that the local taxpayer effort is responsible to kind of make up that difference under the new Fair School Funding Formula. And this money that we receive from the state comes on a bi-weekly basis. So that's, it's not reflective in the settlements that we get from real estate quarterly, or from the county quarterly. This is more reflective of the state funding. So the change in revenue from the November forecast, and I tried to make this picture smaller, bigger, and it seems like anyway, I tried to do it. It's a bit blurry, so my apologies. But for fiscal year 2024, we are within about 98% of the projected revenues for the year. Some of the areas that we had the gradient, greatest variances for projected revenue were in the general property tax revenue, your unrestricted, unrestricted grants and aid from the state, the restricted grants and aid from the state, and all other revenue. Next slide, please. And I know I was asked last forecast to kind of include a comparison of where we stack up in Lake County. So this brings in all the Lake County districts, Perry, Painesville, Wickliffe, Willoughby, Eastlake, Mentor, Fairport Harbor, Kirtland, Riverside, and Madison is at the bottom. So I think this is a very powerful slide to look at for the per pupil revenues that we receive. I mean, we are in the bottom for Lake County, coming in at $13,127.64. The statewide average is $16,485.06. So I think this really speaks to the fact that we are still providing a high-quality education with, you know, the lowest revenue in Lake County. Next, moving on to the expenditure category. You know, as with any district, staffing is our largest expense, coming in at about 80%. Purchased services, which, which can include any outside service contract, whether it be copiers through the Educational Service Center for staffing, obviously, we outsource our transportation. Any of those things can fall into the purchased service category. And this breaks it down by the staffing cost, the purchased services, and then all other expenditures, which can be your supplies, debt, all other operating uses, makes up the five, the all other, all other expenditures. Like the revenue, I did a slide on change in expenditures from the November forecast. So we did see some cost savings as compared to the November forecast. We, the greatest variances for the expenditures, we saw in the salaries category that came in lower than anticipated. Benefits came in slightly higher than anticipated for this year. Purchased services came in a little, a little bit lower than anticipated as well. I wanted to point out, and Superintendent Smith also felt it important to point out that special education does cost us about, you know, 25% of our budget. And working with Mrs. Grimes and Holly and my staff, we just completed the threshold, it's formerly catastrophic cost, they're now making it, as I call it, threshold cost. But we were able to identify around 30 students, and you go through all of the different special education, you know, their teacher costs, their supplies, their transportation costs, supply costs. For those 30 students alone, it was around $900,000. You know, this is a month-long project that we undergo, and the state reimbursement will probably get around $300,000 back. And that's for 30 of our higher needs students. So just to give you a kind of an example of how expensive special education is. I did a similar slide to this on the revenue. This is also all of Lake County, and where we stack up for expenditure wise. The top slide in red is for 2023. Madison is always on the bottom for both charges typically. But I also included 2022 because Madison was the third from the bottom for the per pupil expenditures, coming in at $13,132, or $13,4856, with the statewide average being $50,000. coming in at 13,132, or 13,4856, with the statewide average being 15,23164. I included 2022 on purpose because I think that Riverside and Fairport Harbor were utilizing their S R funds for a lot of these expenditures. So I think it's just slightly skewed for 2023 where it didn't put us quite. It's not that we want to be at the bottom, but I think that's what made a little bit of the change there. But for 2022, you can clearly see we were at the bottom there as well. This is just the forecast projected revenues versus expenditures and also the projected cash balance in a bar chart form. So the three-year financial outlook by fiscal year 2026, the district is expected to trend toward a cash balance of about 2.5 million with a net loss for the year of around 219,000. And the five-year financial outlook by fiscal year 2028, the district cash balance is projected to be about $1.5 million with a projected net loss of $407,000. Next slide is just the average annual change in key revenue and expenditure assumptions. So this also just gives you the historical annual revenue change and the projected annual revenue change. We did build in and we do anticipate increases in school fees by about 20% as well as pay-to-participate. You know, we haven't really raised the cost for those and we don't by any means break even for sports. You know, we are paying for the lighting of stadium and transportation costs, coaching costs. I mean, it's something that will need to be addressed here. And the annual changes in expenditures, I did also put kind of a side note on there. This obviously is going to rise under the projected category as we are entering into negotiations at the end of the month, and it will be anticipated that we will have to have some repairs at the buildings. I like this slide a lot, the per pupil general fund expenditure slide. It goes back from 2019 and it obviously projects through the life of the forecast to 2028. But I think what's powerful about this slide, if you look from fiscal year 2019 and then even up to fiscal year 2024, back in 2019, the district was keeping its expenditures at $10,303. Now, fast forward to 2024 with inflation and everything else, we have managed to keep those expenditures, you know, we're only at 11,474. And, you know, I think that speaks highly that we diligently look for grants, other revenue sources, and we really try to do little, do a lot with what little we have. This next slide, I also like this. It's the daily cost to educated pupil. And so the daily cost to educated pupil is around $64 that we're spending. And, you know, I think for what we provide, that's a very minimal cost and we do a lot. I know we've done a lot with the ecology program and there's just been so many great things that we do here. And, you know, you think what you spend on a cup of coffee daily and that sort of thing, that kind of puts it in perspective a little bit more. The pie chart over to the right-hand side is the per pupil expenditure support. And this again speaks to that Fair School Funding Plan and some of the slides I went over in the beginning where the resident property owner's portion is about 30% and the state, federal, and business portion is at about 70%. So that's where we're at right there. This is just the current forecast compared to November forecast in a bar chart, a little bit easier to read than the previous one. But the current total revenue was under by about $574,000 and the expenditures were under by about $559,000. Luckily, they offset each other, resulting in a favorable outcome of what we estimated, so. This slide looks a little bit busy, but it does break down all the different revenues and expenditures by fund source. So if you wanted to look at, you know, exactly where we're at per salaries and wages, 58%, supplies, 3%, benefits, 21%, purchase services, 15%. So it's just kind of a different way to look at how we are expending our money on a more granular level. This is the forecast at a glance for fiscal year 2024. So we had a beginning cash balance of 3.5 million. Our 2024 forecasted revenues were 28.5 million, forecasted expenditures 28.7 million, resulting in an ending cash balance of 3.3 million. So just three key takeaways I kind of wanted to go over is there was a change from the November 2023 forecast that included some legislative changes that did impact the forecast. We will continue to diligently monitor revenues and expenditures and where enrollment's at. But I think I also printed out larger copies of the forecast rather than what's in this very last slide because it's very hard to read. But I think if you look at the larger forecast, you can see that towards the last couple, we're deficit spending. Every single year, we do have a positive fund balance all five years, which is a nice comparison. But we are deficit spending and it compounds as we advance in the years. So I think that, you know, definitely by the end of fiscal year 2026, we do need to start looking for alternatives of additional revenue sources and addition or, you know, maybe some expenditure reductions, so. That was my presentation. I did also include, I know I went over a lot of legislative things with the Fair School Funding Plan, but if you wanted to get into more of the details, there is a state supplement included as well.
Sarah, on that, it shows the cash balance ending 28 of 156,000. But on the one bar graph, it shows a projected cash balance of 1.5.
You're talking about this little one?
Yeah, in fiscal year 28, it's 156,000?
Oh, that's a six.
What?
That's a six.
No, I know, but if you go to the one bar graph you had back, I don't know, a handful of slides, it shows the projected cash balance ending of 28, which had a starting balance, which should be. If you go back a couple more. Here you go. Here you go. Here you go.
You're talking about this one?
Yeah. Yeah, that one. See, now it says 1.5 million roughly? On the bar graph?
For 28 projected cash balance?
Yeah. But then on the spreadsheet, it shows 156.
So 646. And this projected balance, it does, this takes into account any possible renewal levies that we could have as well. Like this is.
Okay, no, it's just. And then for that per pupil, I think if going forward, maybe like someone or we can put either the pupil size or what the street number is, like for this one, per pupil. Because it kind of, it does paint a picture, but pupil size and the actual revenue is going to, you know, because when you do it per pupil, as your pupils go up and down, even though your topic doesn't change, it's going to, just to make sure that.
And sometimes, I mean, sometimes the surrounding districts that we compare to, like our per pupil, we're never going to have as many students as a mentor.
No, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, but.
Very small.
I mean, I could narrow it down to districts that have more of a similar enrollment size.
Well, even like if we, like, no, comparing the barriers good, but I think it would show people if they are less kids, they're getting more money. You know what I mean? Because people can say, oh, per pupil. But if you also add in that other part of it, it helps just ahead-of-time answer the questions of, you know, are we trying to play with the numbers? Not to say we are. No, but what, you know, it just paints the whole picture.
Right.
Because we see it like in what we do, per ton. It's the flat cost and then it's the cost per ton. So you want to look at both sides. You can either sandbag or go the other way.
And this is kind of a, there's a report out there that comes out every year for every school. It's called the CUP Report. And that's what the revenue, it's on the Ohio Department of Education website. But the CUP Report goes in and it breaks down a lot of the various, it obviously does report card, but it also does financials, demographics, that sort of thing. And it does it for every single school. So when I was doing this, this was based off of the CUP Report.
I got you. No, it just. And the only other last question would be, again, when it comes to contractors and costs, like, can we help with that process just to make sure a contractor, you know, hey, we're a school, we're a government entity, that they're not trying to put the screws to us?
Oh, we do all the time.
I know, but Grand River Village did a project and we reviewed all the, just to make sure, I mean, they didn't like us, the contractors, because we made them honest. I mean, I just don't want them to think, hey, we got a blank check and it's a screw-up.
No, no, no. They don't. We don't have many, you know, projects that we do. So when we do a rough, you know, you get three bids, we have to do three bids or three quotes. We go with state term and those types of things.
I just want to make sure.
I trust, no. No, I understand.
Trust verified.
It's important for us.
State term, I think is, we call it state contracting, where the state gets all the bids and everything, does all the work ahead of time. So any entity can then utilize those bids so that giving those bids to the state for lots of.
No, that makes it like check and balance.
Yeah, we use the Ohio Schools Council and their.
For many of the projects, you know, bussing, garbage, you know, those types of things.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
On the one slide where you show daily cost to educate a student and resident share, is this like the average for 30% of resident property owner portion to the state and federal business of 30 to 70%? Do you think that's an average? Do you think that's normal? Because I really don't know that answer myself for.
It does vary.
Because of the more expensive homes, things like that, right?
Right.
But as far as the percentage, do you think it's a 30, 70 or working out?
If you're dealing with a wealthier district, I mean, that could be them taking up a higher, a higher percentage and taking the state portion down.
Right. For example, like Owentang, Jane, and Columbus, you know, they had a boom of people. They have high property values. So their outside local share is higher than probably what their state share is. This district has traditionally been heavily state-funded. And this is the first time in many budget cycles that we are impacted by enrollment because we were on a guarantee. So they, no matter what our enrollment was, we were guaranteed X amount of dollars.
They took that away.
And they took that away.
So the state coming out with this fair funding that I've heard ever since I joined the board, I've heard that, but I've not really seen much, but we talk about it a lot, right, as far as state? Is that ever going to come to fruition to where we don't have to? Is the goal to never ask for property levy tax ever again? Is that the goal or no?
There was a six-year phase in.
Right. And I realize that, but I just want people to realize.
And we are in years three and four. And based on what I have heard at all my conferences and at our superintendent meetings, it is very doubtful five and six are going to happen in the next biannual budget. So it's a matter of us lobbying our legislatures and trying to tell them that this money is needed. But what I, the last presentation I heard on the budget, we are down in the state on revenue. Not a lot, but we are going down. And so as we go into the budget process, not this next year, but the year after, there's, you know.
Right. I mean, the five-year forecast definitely shows that we're going to continue to decline in revenue and expenses going up. So something has to give, right? And it's just difficult in this community to talk about, you know, putting a levy on a board, you know, on the ballot because our local administration is so anti-property tax. So it puts extra pressure on school districts that are, you know, as we are struggling, as we obviously see. It's just frustrating.
And the levy cycle that we're currently on.
Right.
What we just even experienced with the PI levy, turning into the emergency levy, and now the finances levy. So we'll have to.
I mean, it's a hard thing to communicate to, you know, the public how dire straits and needs that we have in any school district, not just Madison, but and to go against upper political whatever is pushing it down. So it's a battle no matter what. You know, it makes the struggles hard.
And we talked about, because she said salary costs came in under. Well, salary costs came in under because we couldn't find custodians for, you know, the majority of the year.
People don't know that, you know, that those are the struggles we're under.
We were under.
Oh, we saved money, you know, but everybody's suffering. Struggle, not that. It's frustrating, that's all. Good job. That was riveting.
I kept it under secret.
It is going.
I'll let you get seated. Do we have a motion to approve the May 2024 five-year forecast as presented?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Horda?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We do have the need for executive session for number four?
Yep.
All right. So if we could have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions for public employees?
I'll move.
Second.
I'm going to point out that we will not be conducting any business when we reconvene. We will simply adjourn the meeting. So roll call?
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Horda?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
We stay in recess.